Thank you all so very much for joining us this evening. This is 7:06 and I'd like to officially call this name to work. Roopah please.
Simmons.
First one.
Nelson.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Paredes.
Here.
Huckabee.
Here.
Ford.
Here and a Ford is present. First item on the agenda, audience comments. We have Bob. My name is Melchior Westen.
Brandland.
Brandland, Mr. Brandland.
Many of you know who I am. I'm a trustee for the library. And I want to thank the board for helping us deal with the after-school issues. I'm pleased to report that this year, our incident reports have moved to the positive. We are not having this mess. We've got programs set up over there and hopefully some of the Parker students who are the primary people who come to the library afterwards are enjoying themselves there. Thank you again for your help. When I saw the article in The Chronicle about the November 13 meeting, I was disappointed. I wasn't surprised because I had looked since I worked with Steve a couple of years ago. When Heather Hill was a two on Zillow out of the 10, how could Heather Hill be a two? And we started something called 20 Minutes Matter and it got traction here. IJP did it, 153 worked with the Park District. They had a program that was going like that. So we were trying to find things to help, help the kids improve their grades. Because when I sat down with Mr. Doster X years ago and I came to the conclusion, I didn't think it was an issue with the administration, I didn't think it was an issue with the teachers. Teachers can't do it all. They need a little help from home. And my thought is, the person, people who are responsible for their children's education are the parents and they have to put them in the right spot to go there. I know I worked with Cam a little bit when he was trying to get elected, then get elected and then got elected and we worked hard to do that because he was focused on a lot of the scores. But what I've seen over the last four, five, six, seven years is that our grade schools, excluding Parker, the scores are here. And then what happens is when they get to Parker, the scores go down. And it's not just one year here or one year there. It's consistently going down, 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 year after year. And I don't get it. That's one of the reasons why I started with the 20 Minutes Matter because if you can help kids at K through three and get them reading and arithmetic, the gap isn't so big. By the time they get to Parker, the gap may be a little bit higher if you're trying to bring them up. And when I talked to Vaughn and Jerry at HF, they, if they had a little more help at the Parker area, their grades may be better than what they are. They're trying to bring the kids up. So I sent a letter to a couple of you and said that we've got a new librarian, Jamie Paisley, she's coming in and I would like to put the right people together with Jamie so that the library can redouble its efforts, especially with the kids who come over and use our after-school programs there. So that we aren't just doing whatever it is we're doing, it's more of a learning type thing. So we can pitch in and help. But I'm kind of using that as an example. I don't want to wait until next year. I don't want to have a one-year planning program and then we'll something out over three years. To me, that doesn't cut it. Number of my neighbors, some of them have left the area. There's one family who lived down the block from me and they moved up to Wilmette. Their kid was in an accelerated program. Their older boy went to Choate out east and they couldn't get what they were anticipating that they could get from Parker. And so they moved and now commutes from Wilmette down to the University of Chicago. They've lost a bunch of money on their home. They also tripled their real estate taxes. But they did that for their kid because they couldn't get what they were expecting from their, from the school for their child. So they were fortunate enough that they had some, they were able to do that. My Cam rep who's here with me, we participated in a couple of community-wide meetings where we're focused on a myriad of issues. But one of the folks who was focused on school, as he got up to give his report from the strategic planning meeting, so to call it, he said, "Flossmore goes to the school still." And when we were first built here, the community is bedroom community. It's not light industrial. And with all the bedrooms, there's one thing that goes in lots of bedrooms and those are kids. And if our scores, when we compare them to say, one of our neighbors, Frankfurt, no, our scores are materially lower than Frankfurt, pretty much across the board. And I just find, I don't understand why. And what I've, in my business career, I've dealt with crises from time to time. And we work over the weekends, we work real hard, we get a plan and we communicate that plan to our stakeholders. And we don't wait for a year to communicate a plan. And as each period goes by, what we did was we said, "Here are 10 things that we're going to do." And we said, "Done, done, done." And if people need some help with the communication, because when I read the quotes that were here in The Chronicle, and I presume Tom was pretty accurate in his quotes, I was disappointed with him. Because if I'm a new person who's moving into the neighborhood and I see some of the quotes that were given here, I'll need to take a chance with my kids. I'll go look someplace else. So if you folks have got any questions or comments either now or later, you know, give me a call or I'd be happy to answer a question now.
Summarize what the library wants to do.
Well, as I said, Dana has sent an email. He's given me, I don't know, six, seven, eight days. Jamie doesn't start until the 3rd.
We'll find out.
And so that piece of the puzzle is easy. But I would be looking for something that would be a companion to that, that, okay, we've had Christmas holidays, yeah, maybe I didn't get to go on vacation now, maybe I had to pull a few of the T-shirts in, et cetera, et cetera, so that we could start something immediately. Because I just kind of ask a rhetorical question. If our grades are quote, whatever the quote is in here for our ranking, what do you think Zillow is going to grade our school now?
So Bob, I think you have absolutely valid points and we'd just like to recognize as a committed community member for the school district. I think we've had a lot of conversations about how to serve our children effectively and, you know, to that end, I've kept those conversations going. We've talked about after-school, what that means for kids. Actually, we have another community member who'd be willing to assist the district and the library coming together to think about this issue a little more creatively and to hopefully access some funds to, again, you know, get students involved, get them engaged in positive after-school activities, a direct connection to probably really achieve in school and certainly in life as well. You know, you referenced The Chronicle article. I did actually send an email because I don't know the, I have a response to some of the quotes, I didn't provide as much context as we were looking for. We're not waiting, absolutely not. I'd really like your feedback on providing information on the plan. We're going to talk about that a little bit tonight. I'd encourage you to come to the next several board meetings. This will be a consistent topic. We want to provide additional transparency to the community. We have a quality framework that Parker has to work through. We have a plan that's due to the state at the end of February. There's a number of opportunities between here and there to communicate effectively and to get feedback on the way and then after that to keep the community updated just on our progress. So this is, it's a very urgent issue. We're not waiting. Yes, this is a plan here, but that doesn't mean we're not going to start implementing this year as well. So we'll have short-term and long-term goals in this as well.
One last comment. I participated in the HF strategic planning meeting a couple of weeks ago and there were two comments that were made. One gentleman got up and I figured, I was one of the few people there who didn't have kids in the school. Most of them I felt. And he said, "Average ACT coming out of HF is 19." And I think the average ACT coming out of Lincoln Way is 23, a few. And he said, "I just need you to get close, close the gap a little bit more. Do whatever it is you have to do, but you've got to close the gap a little bit more." Another gentleman got up and he said, "I had a kid, though he was a pretty bright kid, he goes to college. College wasn't for him. Comes back home and now he's in the trades. He's an electrician." And he said, "Dad, I didn't realize that even if I wasn't going on to college, I still had to know how to do the arithmetic as an electrician." And so whether we're helping our children become valued tradespeople or we're sending them off to college, what we're doing here is the grade score, especially in that K through three. That's where I'm focused at the library. Every year I sit down with the librarian and I said, "How are we doing on our summer reading program? How many kids have we got? Did we beat last year?" We're measuring that. How many kids are wibbles and diddles, stuff like that? We have to measure it. You know, that was a big thing that Cam was doing when he was trying to get it. So when Jamie comes in, we'll sit down and go from there. But thank you for all the time you spend. It's not easy, but you have probably the most important job in the community. Good luck. Let me know if I can help. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We absolutely appreciate the library coming out and wanting to partner with us to figure out how to move this forward. I agree with all the comments that you've made. And it is urgent and I think a lot of the questions that you ask are questions that were brought up in the last meeting by board members. We will be discussing data this evening. We will continue to discuss it. But I absolutely agree that we cannot wait until next year. We cannot discount this year. This year is not a wash. There are things that we want to see that are done next year that starts to move us in the right direction. So we appreciate you wanting to partner in some kind of way to help us.
As a matter of money, library's got some money.
Well, and you know what? The district does too. And the district, the board, I am certain and absolutely committed to making sure that we are, we want to provide the resources necessary to move, so that this is a different competition this year. So we are not afraid to ask something, put a plan to approve us spending money if that means it's for the benefit of our, of our children, K through eight. We absolutely want to prepare them for what's at HF and what's beyond HF. And that is what our, that's our fundamental job. We have to prepare them.
Thank you.
So that was the only community member that has signed up, so we will move on to the next item on the agenda.
Sure, so we have a few recognitions to make tonight. Actually, Kevin, if you want to click on the decal design banner, I had to load the logo. We were going to recognize Ashlyn Thomas. She won the Parker Junior High PTO, Parker Pride Decal Design for the school. She won a gift card with a student PTO. Again, she did a really nice job on this logo for the school and we wanted to recognize her. Two guys, Kumi and Wes, we wanted to recognize her publicly. And then we also are going to recognize our parents and teachers who coached for our athletes at Western Avenue School. This is, you want to say a couple of things about?
Sure. Um, yes.
Okay. Here's one.
So they, this started as just an idea from Dr. McGathy. And we thought it was going to be this small, little program with maybe 20 kids that we would do on a Friday. And it kind of blew up, as most things do at Western, to be very large. We have between 15 and 60 kids, so we needed help. So parents were amazing and stepped up to the plate and made this program be what it is today, which is a full program with kids in second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. And we have two coaches per grade level because we have such a high number of students who are interested. And we're able to give everybody the opportunity to participate in math because of our parent involvement and because of the two teachers who have offered up their Fridays to work with our kids. So it's, it's really fun. We're using a lot of logic problems and games with math, so it's making the math a lot of fun. And then there's an international math competition through Kangaroo Math. That's held, I think it's the second or third week of every March. And Western Avenue is going to be a host site for that competition. So anyone is welcome to sign up and register for it. It's really fun. And we have a parent who came tonight and one of our teachers to be recognized.
Sure. So just to recognize the parents and teachers who coached for athletes, we have Dr. Natalie McGathy, Dr. Stan Griggs, this is Amy Mathis, this is Michelle Nelson, Mr. James Chung, Ms. Shayna Lloyd, and Mr. Sean Bennett. So just a round of applause for all of them. And stay tuned. Thank you.
We need to get certificates. Oh, is it good?
Somebody, this is the exit for typing.
I gave Cameron and Michelle, so we expect you to take a picture.
And upload it, please.
I gave Cameron and Michelle, so we expect you to take a picture.
And upload it, please.
Next item on the agenda, super clean report.
Definitely. Well, coming back after the long break, it was certainly exciting today with all the cold and snow weather, snowy weather I should say. I'm very happy to report that school went off without a hitch today. I'm really thankful to Scott, our director of buildings and grounds. We were on the phone this morning about 3:45. Our school removal company, Desert Dario, was out running the plows, salting the sidewalks, making sure that everything was up and running. And really to our custodians, administrative assistants, teachers, administrators who are slogging through the snow against school on time. We actually had really incredible staff attendance today on a certainly tough travel day, but just very thankful to our staff, excuse me, for making it, making it into work so we welcome our kids with open arms. We had a good day. I would say probably the closest we came to closing was when we lost power somewhere around 4 o'clock in the morning, just briefly over at Western. But that was quickly remedied and you're up and running. So everything was great from that standpoint. Very happy that we did not cancel school at the threat of the weather. Just a couple of quick updates. Sports-wise, on November 20th, our seventh grade girls basketball team closed to regional championships and they play again this Wednesday at Colton Powell School. So we certainly wish them luck. Then do we have an update on eighth grade? Well, our eighth grade girls certainly have a lot to be proud of. They played in the regional quarterfinals today and even though they did not win, we're very proud of them and we'll recognize both of the teams at some point. And that's the end of my.
Any questions or comments?
I know you said the teachers and certainly the community without the staff. Was it in terms of students? Do you know what percentage of students today?
Was certainly not asked positive. I would say that we had a number of students absent. You know, when you have daycareers that are closed and parents are staying home anyway, that kind of fact, our numbers, I would say, you know, in some buildings, they're probably down 20% of their kids.
Those kids though, pretty much were...
They were late, as late as usual, if that is, if that is an okay statement today. I think they were running behind a little bit, but to be honest, I would say in really poor rainy weather, you should get a lot more alerts for late buses than I did today.
I do want to comment and let you know, we've done the hazer period where I was. Our car went off at 2:30 in the morning, did come back on 4:00 AM and went off again. It was not resurfacing to breathe with clean. So we did not know how to hand the door in the garage and it was a very cold day.
Sure.
More on that, so that could have been attended in some places.
Right. And you know, I sort of kind of went over the background. I talked to Scott around 3:45, or I was actually on the phone with Flossmore Buildings and Grounds Department and the police department somewhere around 3:30. So just want to thank them for sharing information and reaching out to IDOD and just making sure that we had everything that we needed to make a good decision and to get kids into school safely.
Thank you. Thank you. Next item up for discussion. We have several discussion items that are up next, but first one is review of school district audit.
Go ahead. All right. What was that? All right. Well, I'll commend you guys having school today. I'm about five miles east of St. Clairville. We got a call at 5 o'clock this morning and said, "No school." And I feel surprised that we weren't able to work out, but we're okay and everything. So, once again, for those that don't know me, I'm Adam Smaga. I'm Senior Manager of Publicas and Professionals. We are your audit firm. Appreciate the honor and camaraderie I present to you guys and for allowing us to be your auditor again this year. Start out with a few housekeeping items here. You'll notice that in front of you, you have draft and financial statements. Couple of reasons for drafts here is we are waiting on your pool cash numbers to be finalized. Your pool cash is with La Croce, the treasurer's office and partners in touch with the pool. We don't audit the pool anymore, so for the last couple of years, we've kind of relied on our audit firm for us to do additional procedures to satisfy that that number's good. Couple more things that we're waiting on. We're hoping to maybe by the end of the week, early next week, everything will be wrapped up with that. Once again, this year there is a management. Fran has entered part and had taken account themselves. They sign off that they have prepared the financial statements. They're comfortable with the footnote disclosures and everything. So once again, there is a management for this year. Last quick thing here, you do receive federal grant line. And so you are required to have a audit on under grant. You guys are a little overshot, so between your debt, your four financial statements and your good results with no management of prior years, we only need to audit on the grant on a rotating basis. So this year we audited the IDA grant, your special location grant. No files will file with that. And once we file the audit, we'll file that with the department, clearing house and we kind of close the books on 2018. All right, well, hop into your financial statements then. Start out.
Should we look at a particular, should we look at the draft section?
Um, yeah. Okay.
Go to...
The first one, I think?
Yeah, the first one.
The first one, no.
Got that one?
That one, okay.
If you go ahead and click page one, the independent honors report. Once again, these aren't stamped draft. We don't anticipate any changes to footnote or to numbers. Those are ones in the case of the page. So start out with the independent honors report. Starts off with the report of financial statements. We have audited a company financial statements. Management is responsible for the preparation and presentation of financial statements. Our responsibility is to express our opinion. Our opinion, which is on page two, is an unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion, which is the best thing we can get. Flip to page three. Let me show you. 3C. Start out, this is what we've always presented to the district and the board for the last past few years. It's kind of snatched on your talent sheet, your student statements. Gives you a really good clearer picture of how companies are looking financially. So we'll start out with the district's composition, 3C. Start out with any assets. You'll notice your assets increased from 59.3 million last year to 62 million this year. Biggest pieces there, your current and other assets were up 1.24 million. And that number is your cash and your investments. Next line item is your capital assets, which increased 1.23 million this year. They think they're worth, you know, the 2017 life safety project finished up and is now being appreciated along with the Parker book. Doing your liabilities, your liabilities were 7 million last year compared to 6.1 million this year, decreasing 900,000. Biggest piece there is our long-term liabilities. You pay down a large portion of the principal on your bond. That's settled out. You pay down about 900,000 every year, so that's the change there. Overall, your composition increased from 52.3 million to 55.9 million, 3.6 million this year. Okay, question on the balance sheet. Next page is your income statement. On page 38, we'll start out with total revenue. Total revenue, 2017 was 38.6 million compared to 45.6 million this year. 6.9 million dollar increase. Biggest changes there, there was a $4.6 million dollar increase in the payments to, I'm sorry, on the add contributions. This is a piece of your TRS payment that the state takes on behalf of total revenue and its expense. So it's a wash on your income statement, but it's a number that we are required to report. So that went from about 5.4 million last year to 10.1 million this year. Other changes, you know, which are operating grants and contributions that on the add numbers in there, but also you did have about a million dollar increase in your grants this year. 800,000 in your state, your state aid payments increased by 800,000. And then 200,000 dollar increase in your federal revenue. Property tax collections were up slightly, 6,000. Grants, non-specific programs, once again, that's your state aid. Additional state aid given 900,000 higher than last year. Paying some of the taxes, your PPRT taxes, your personal property replacement taxes will go down a little bit. Best earnings were up due to the pool. And then you notice miscellaneous was up 373,000. What's sitting in there is the STEM donations, 200,000 dollars. Your E-Rate went up about 40 grand. And there's also a $22,000 insurance refund that came through this year. Looking at your expenses, expenses, once again, up 5.7 million from last year. Why ensure there again is this on the add contributions? Two big things in all the add though are your instruction, your support services. Instruction is kind of 4.1 million. Biggest piece there are your salaries and benefits did increase, opposite of CDA, your contractual increases. And then also medical benefits did increase for this year. The other thing we did note, there was also a large tax purchase at the beginning and the end of the year, just kind of how that flows. Any questions on the income statement? Paying some move taxes, your PPRT taxes, your personal property replacement taxes, they were down a little bit. Best earnings were up due to the pool. And then you notice miscellaneous was up three hundred seventy thousand. What's sitting in there is the STEM donations, two hundred thousand dollars. Your E rate went up about forty grand. There's also a twenty-two thousand dollar insurance refund that came through this year. Looking at your expenses, expenses, once again, up five point seven million from last year. Why ensure there again is the on behalf contributions. Two big things in on behalf though are your instruction, your support services. Instruction is kind of four point one million. Biggest piece there, your salaries and benefits did increase opposite of CDA, your contractual increases. And then also medical benefits did increase for this year. The other thing we did know, there was also a large tax of purchase at the beginning and the end of the year, just kind of how that flows. Any questions on the income statement? Other than that, the footnotes start on page twelve. No real changes this year to them. The one footnote that I didn't want to have bring to everybody's attention is note thirteen is a commitment footnote. Basically, it's just saying at June thirty, the district is committed under certain construction commitments for a maximum of three point six million. So at June thirty, you stole about three point two million in the two thousand eighty life safety, another three hundred thousand in other goals improvements. Trail, T was probably done now. Life safety and other goals, probably.
Or close.
Close to being paid out now at this point, but. We kind of had the footnote, so it was just kind of like show, hey, is your cash was as high at June thirty, but guess what? You still did have about three point six million if you go on after. That's it for the financial statements. Unless anybody has any questions?
Any questions? Can you find these?
One thing I've got said to the brand was the audit communication letter. When we do our divine finals, show footage of the package. There's really nothing in the word over here, other than that it kind of reiterates what we've done with the district to be had. And then also, there's a section here called business agreements with management. I want to first tell you I had no privacy with the business office. I would love to go into the business office, their third office. So I've got the brand, Harry, and everybody's business office. It's a pleasure to work with. And the last thing that's attached here is your bill on trees. We'll get to these around the Treasurer's Office as we close the books and we'll close twenty eighteen.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
October financial reports.
Thanks very much.
Any questions for Fran?
You should go and ask a question about fancy new dashboard.
I love my dashboard. I am putting them up on my website too, so that they'll start communicating up there.
There are color codes on. One way. Dental renewal.
Really, there's not much to speak of. We're going to keep rates flat. Even with accounting for a trend increase, year over year, we're still doing pretty well with our self-insure dental plan, so we plan on no increase for next year.
Any questions? If there are no questions or concerns about transportation, then I'll be the first.
Maybe, maybe here.
I did have a question. I just wanted to make sure, because I was looking at something earlier. So the comparison.
Yep.
And I know I've asked, I know I've asked you a question before. But I keep asking because I'm just wondering, I saw how you compared it to the other, to other districts and how even with where we are, we're saving money.
Yes.
It appears that we're saving.
So what I did, because you have to try and get it to an apples to apples basis. So I took the other district's rates and I applied them onto our runs to see then where the final bill would end up. And across the board, even though at first I thought we were really high, it turned out that we weren't just because we run our routes. That is being, we're paired with Parker, with the exception of two routes. So our buses are running an elementary route and a junior high route for one rate. Whereas most of our other districts that I surveyed, they were paired with like a high school. So they were paying one rate, the high school was paying a different rate for that. So to take their rate, I would have to use it twice. One for the elementary and one for the junior high. So when I finally kind of really got to apples to apples, we actually are doing better than all of our neighbors that I surveyed.
And even with the, I think I stopped by Recomp frankly, it was like a fifteen minute delay time or change.
So here's what we've got them doing right now. So we're not done yet. I've asked Paige to rerun our routes and look at efficiencies. So the question is, if we start the elementary schools fifteen minutes later, would we be able to get more capacity onto each of the buses and save ourselves a few routes? The problem right now, why we can't do that is there's not enough time between drop off at Parker and drop off at, pick up and then bring to the elementaries to get those buses to capacity or at least closer to capacity.
Right now, we're about fifty-two percent of capacity on a bus. So there's a lot of unused seats.
Is that seasonal? Well, I mean, the percentage, the capacity rate fluctuate given the.
Absolutely. I would say we're fifty-two percent allocated capacity. So the students who we think should ride the bus placed onto a bus route, we're about fifty-two percent. Now, the students who actually ride. The students who actually ride the bus. Every day would probably be lower. No, it's higher. Certainly it's winter and then on a nice spring day, it's probably a little lower. I would say at full capacity, the way that our students are allocated, we're about fifty-two percent.
So right now, that's what they're doing for managing. I hope it's here by the end of the week where they're taking a look at all of the routes and kind of using their software and reallocating and seeing if an additional fifteen minutes would make a material enough change that's worth looking at. So like I said, we're still looking.
And for, and this is where I'm going with this, and I know I've mentioned this before, but looking at, I mean, has there ever been new kind of conversation based on what we pay for transportation on a yearly basis and what a high school pays for transportation? Want to be free, you know, again, of trying to maybe pull together to do, I'm not going to say what name we'd be under, but I know Lincoln Lake has, definitely has their own bus, but they own their buses out.
They own their buses.
Yeah, they own.
And the rest of the bus are, you know, those, Homewood and H L are contracted. Right now, we have a better rate than everyone else does.
But even with, we contract our services, but what we're paying year to year going out in the long term, over the years, I'm just saying, has anybody ever looked at this possibility of homing?
In order to gain any efficiencies, you'd have to be able to use one bus or more routes than what you're able to do currently in the morning. That would require an awful lot of moving around and starts and finishes or.
Being that the barriers are tough, there's not enough gap.
There's not enough gap. Remember, the buses are drop off and it needs to go back out, pick up the kids, bring them back again. So it's that gap time.
Steve, I just, and almost just asking for the sake of asking, so just to clarify that the big issue with moving the elementary start time a little earlier or closer to Parker is that there's just no, there's just not enough time to get from point eight to point eight, or from Parker to elementary.
Right. So I mean, what we're looking at is actually making their start times even potentially a little further apart.
Okay. And there's just, I think everyone knows the answer to this, but there's no way that, no, I guess it doesn't matter. Second part of my question. Okay. Thanks.
Can you remind us what the start times used to be before we went to the.
Oh, wait.
Do you remember? Does anybody remember?
I'm not sure anyone else was here. Nine o'clock?
Nine?
Yeah, it was later. It was later.
Nine at what circle? Before we went to this, before the project that we have now, before we went through this massive change with our bus system and the change in ties.
It was like back to the night until three forty.
Yeah. There was, I know that there was a whole music program at Parker that kids could attend prior to regular start of the school. That was concerned that if you pushed up the school time, then kids have to choose between band or basketball and, or, you know, the music program.
And the other concern was at an end time at Parker at three forty-five, they weren't able to get to wherever they needed to be at a sporting event. So we had students missing the last period.
They were missing last period every time they came.
Any other questions on transportation?
So you put the request in to la la what a fifteen minute later start time looks like in terms of the busing.
Correct.
You're hoping to hear back.
I'm in the waiting room.
And this is, this is all just discussion.
At this point, yes.
Is there a number that the board thinks would encourage us to move forward with a change in start time and what, how big is that savings that we would consider?
I'm supportive, as you know, we had many conversations about this, of exploring ways to increase that fifty-two percent. Better, more efficient usage of our transportation. We've got the machine reality out there. We've got to put more kids on a bus than half the, so this is an option. We have to look at it, consider it, and maybe there are a few other others as well.
Looking.
I agree with John. The other part, I know that we certainly always look at the bottom line in terms of dollars, but I'm also thinking about how moving in time and tying this discussion with, you know, our contract with the bus company, the efficiency of, you know, picking up on time and servicing our families and students in time of demand. Because I mean, we continue to, new contracts, we continue to have issues with this, it kind of, it kind of defeats the purpose. Because we're costing, we're costing parents time, you know, they have to come off their jobs or they have to delay their jobs and we have to, you know, numerous complaints and multiple complaints. So I'm hoping that we're tying in the pieces in terms of performance. You know, renewing these contracts, not just for the sake of the dollars, but we also want to see the performance on behalf of the bus company, insurance, providing services to families, you know, we're going to be more efficient. Are we able to resolve the issue that we have had in the past? Are we looking and measuring and seeing, are they performing better this year than they did last year? Is there improvement? Or are we just, I just want to make sure that we're not just looking at the bottom line in terms of.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, so I want to make sure that we're looking at that performance aspect.
Yes.
And the efficiency as well.
Although I will say, I mean, this time last year, we were still, we had tons of parents coming to meetings, tons of email, text messages. I mean, so there had, there have been, I think, major improvements from this year, from last year to this year.
I want to make sure that is the case, because sometimes I know this is a thing for myself, sometimes people can just retire, happen to continue to complain and they just go ahead and do what they can just consider their step. I just want to make sure we catch all those.
So one of the things that I have with us company doing now is every evening afternoon, they send me a report that has run off their GPS system that shows me what time they pulled into school.
Good.
Yeah, the service is really important to us. It's quality of life fishing for our parents, but also getting the kids to school in a safe, non-rushy manner. You know, kids sitting out on a corner for an extra ten or fifteen minutes, especially on a warm night tomorrow when it's fifteen degrees out. So it's great.
And like I mentioned to you last year, I know, and this shit that I saw, and I know wasn't, the way I look at things, if it's happening to me, it's got to be happening to somebody else, if somebody else is not speaking up. But I remember seeing a lot of times those messages coming in, once I got signed up, those messages coming in that a bus was actually going to be late, once my daughter was standing out there. And to me, you should know if you left the garage late, those notices should be coming out a little bit earlier to prepare students, bringing in parents for, and sometimes they didn't show up at all. So, you know.
So that's one of the things we did work with the bus company on. Part of the challenge with those alerts is that they're driver generated. The other side of that performance contract type, you know, structure is that people want to hit the targets. And if you're self-reporting your on-time routes, it can lead to kids standing out there for a while, then all of a sudden the text comes through because they finally had a point where they're not going to make the time to catch up. So to Fran's point, checking all of the GPS logs. We've spoken with the bus company about the way that they were reporting, how dispatch reaches out to buses to make sure, okay, you know, you left at this time, you should be here. You there? Okay, great. We'll catch up with you in a few more minutes and we'll make sure that they're on time throughout the route.
Do we have a way to measurably record quantitatively how many times they are where they're supposed to be and then just to do a forecast to see, well, okay, this year we've actually done a lot better, you know, or, and we're dropping off again on these routes and kind of address the issues. But certainly, right, great, people self-report, you know, they push things, yeah, I'm almost there. My wife sees a van, if I'd say, yeah, the car's parked around the corner, I'm walking another ten blocks. But, so I understand, but is there something we can just get rid of that altogether and the information comes in and immediately goes into the spreadsheet? Nothing that would take a lot of man hours, but just something where it would be set up so.
I've been working with Cook Illinois, their management team and trying to figure out what we can get from their GPS system. Well, it's just not that clean right now. It does take quite a bit of manual work, both on their part and mine. So at first, I had envisioned, like literally putting graphs together so that I knew at a moment's notice until I realized just how much daily work that was going to take on my part. So now I mostly just go down the reports and look for anomalies and note those off so that I can keep sort of a track of whether they're super lean or not. I would say that they've been doing a lot better. Today, obviously, it's difficult, no matter who you work on, but.
Right. I think the key is whether or not we have a bus company that is open to working with us and as we come up with new requests, have they been, I mean, because I've been in the district, I don't know, sixteen, seventeen years, I have never experienced a perfect bus company. I mean, just not at why. I mean, so the, you know, what parents experienced last year is not new, we've experienced it with several other bus companies in the past. So I think as we continue to work with the bus company, we just have to make sure we have a bus company that we can work with and that's willing to work with us. I think it has improved a great deal over this past year.
Jeff Barnes has been terrific to work with this year and he even made a lot of changes within the stage for us and I think we're starting to see them that physical changes.
I mean, so I think relationship is everything. So, okay. Any other questions regarding transportation? Any questions regarding the revised policy for one seventy?
Was it just the, I didn't see a whole lot of change there. Was anything that you want to point out, maybe about what's missing or?
I don't think it's anything specific, just updated policy.
Yeah, it's updated policy because law change may require us to cuse of factors in the boiler rooms and every place, right? We could end up, and so we have to take care of that now. This is just the policy language I follow.
Okay.
We'll bring this back for a second.
Any questions or concerns regarding Medicaid billing contract extension?
I do have a quick question about this. When I was working at Big Samba, just help me understand, I noticed it ended by July thirtieth or seventeenth. That much, does that cover that?
Um, that pretty much, does that cover, that covers our summer school?
Yes.
That's okay.
That's why, that they didn't want to transition in the middle of summer school?
Got it. Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, next item, ESSA designations.
Sure, I want to come back on the ESSA designations to the Board of Education. After our meeting on 13th, we had a number of questions. Kathy, can you click on the middle document? Uh, this was, I think you hit command plus two. Great. This document was shared a little bit earlier, trying to address all the different questions from the board. I mean, we see a few today that I've not added to this document, but it's important that, not only the board, but certainly the community, see that we are responding to the specific questions, and frankly, building on those as well. I think, and we'll just, actually, yeah, let's go through a couple of these, I won't read all of them to you, but this first question is really important. I think it kind of gets to the basis of everything that we're talking about. We look at, what is the most important information that we need to analyze? You know, I think this, this question was asked a number, a couple of different ways, specifically around, how do we know that we're doing the right work in the schools? At the board level, the governance level, how are we measuring that progress in a way that is effective? So as we're choosing where to spend personnel money, as we're choosing where to spend resource money, we have effective plans moving forward. We really need to get to a very clear, transparent data dashboard, we've talked about that, but also the different indicators that we're looking for, whether they're, you know, lag indicators, park data, which is currently it's months old, but in the future, that should be a lot better, our park data, or our map data, which we receive three times a year, we have formative assessment data, which we can, you know, we determine how frequently we want to gather that information. And I'll tell you, that's an out cam, but Cam asked a really provocative question that I've wrestled with on this topic for a long time, and it's, you know, how did we know? Right? So how could we have anticipated the data, the park data that we received? And I think the question kind of gets to this, the point of, you know, this first issue. We have to have the right indicators in our dashboard, we have to have the right instructional conversations at our grade level and department meetings, so that there's a canary in the coalmine that says, hey, you know, we're not on the same pace that we were last year, or that where we should be. We need to reevaluate what we're doing and make changes to move forward. So there's a number of things, you know, we talked about the massive drops in achievement, just a couple of things that we looked into, we reviewed two of the technology issues, and we looked at overlap in the testing scores, when eighth grade took their tests compared to sixth grade, and, you know, there are no true anomalies. Uh, but we've also identified just a lot of pieces of data that we can use to analyze, you know, the standards that we're using. We've talked about the evidence statement reports with our building principals today, they kind of took to that information. It lays out Parker's performance in relation to all of the Illinois State standards, to the rest of the district, to Parker's performance, and to the state. So we can take those standards and say, yes, here's where we need to address this, we need to spend additional time on this particular standard, and here's how we can do that. You know, we're just poking through a couple of the, the standards at the elementary level, and sure enough, one of those is, our new literacy series directly addresses that particular standard. So it was, it was good to see that we have, you know, materials that are matching to rigor the expectations, now we have to deliver those. One of the things that I did want to bring with potential to explore a little bit, Kathy, um, not that hard, but, our opt-out students. We have to make sure that our families, parents, children, understand the importance of this assessment. It is not life or death, it is not the be all, end all, but it's a very important indicator on how we're doing as a district, how our children are growing, how our system works as just an educational organization. And we had a number of students opt out. One of the things we did want to look into, you know, I think Carol may ask, if not, I apologize, how did our high-performing, low-income students do? And we have a little bit of information in there. We also found that a number of high-performing, low-income students opted out of the test altogether. A high number of them, 15?
19.
19 of them who scored before or a five. That's meeting or exceeding the standards. That's an incredible number. So we have to figure out why that happened, and there's no quantitative indicator that will get us there, but the, what's the qualitative reason that the students and their families decided, we don't want to take this test, we don't want to participate in it? So I think there's some work to do there. Again, these children are gone, they're already at the high school. HF does share information with, with us about the performance of our formerly eighth-grade students, so we'll look forward to that, Bloom House School does as well. So we'll try to triangulate that data as we move forward. If we could scroll down, just one last thing to adjust before we kind of hit the timeline piece. The areas that we really want to focus on to improve our performance this year, there's a couple of things. Culture is incredibly important, elementary and junior high level, we have to contribute to it, we have to focus on it, we have to continue to build it. It's a lot easier, frankly, at the elementary level with the students and the teachers, and I think the work that's been done by our elementary, you know, team over the last several years has really set us up for success. We're implementing Katrien Kids Hearts at Parker Junior High this year, we remember to roll that out at the elementary schools next year. That will help give us an additional layer of vocabulary and alignment between our elementary and Parker's school, uh, uh, action plan. We need to continue to implement our programs with fidelity. We're year two of math, we're year one of literacy, we do continue to implement those programs as they're intended. In addition, we need to focus on the fidelity of our interventions. One of the things I would like to talk to the board tonight, about tonight, is approving a contract with one of our former principals, Pat McCraven, to do some special projects with us, particularly around interventions and fidelity, program fidelity. If you look back at the incredibly strong data at Flossmore Hills, and the diverse student body, you will see a couple of things. One, you will see the impact of implementation and clarity of the expectations. Now, you'll also see interventions directly tied to student being, okay? So where we, as I've had conversations with Ms. McCraven, and how she could come back and serve the district, it would be to work with our administrative team, to talk through the interventions that we're currently using, why we're using them, how we're paying interventions to student being, the amount of time that we're spending, and what that looks like on a K8 level, to get to the point where we can accurately say, we have a student with a comprehension issue, this is the intervention, these are the minutes pervaded that the child needs in order to grow, here's how we're going to track it, here's how we're going to be successful, if we're not, here's what we'll do next. So that's not for approval tonight, but only for discussion, but I did want to share, I will pull that up in just a moment. At Parker, we have to continue with our classroom and school culture. It has to continue to evolve, and in some cases, it has to accelerate, and in some classrooms, it can continue on its upward trend to move forward. But we have to have school-wide implementation of restored practices at Parker, we have to continue with the Katrien Kids Hearts program, and provide additional training is needed. One of the things that we've talked about, what are we going to do, how do we, how do we turn this around? And the answer is quality instruction, unequivocally. It has to be, use the best practices. We have to pair those best practices with what we know the children need. That comes from pre-testing, that comes from post-testing, that comes from analyzing our NWA map scores, or those RIT scores, and, you know, the skill charts that tell us, in order for little Dana to move to the next level, these are the type of skills that he needs to work out to move forward. I would say that buildings we're having the most success do this incredibly effectively in their professional learning communities. Part of the challenge could be training, part of the challenge could be the way that Parker is set up as a junior high, as opposed to a middle school model, and the way that we provide adults opportunities to work together, you know, for student learning, but it's certainly an area that we have to address. Quality instruction is probably the biggest rock that we will put into this, into this well. We need to look at our interventions that we're using at Parker. As we've talked before, we've made some value judgments in the past. Do you skip your reading intervention to go to choir? Do you go to band instead of math interventions? We, I believe there are a few students who need both reading and math, who aren't getting both of those, because they may have band, choir, orchestra commitment during the school day. So we have an opportunity to look at our schedule, to do a few things differently. Now, that's tied directly to our collective bargaining agreement with our, the Flossmore Education Association, but that's an opportunity that we can use to make some changes. But interventions are a major piece of what we need to do. And then finally, just maximizing the instructional time in the classroom. Some things are self-inflicted, but balance out, we have a lot of professional development for our teachers, we know it's important for them to grow, we also know that we're taking our most, you know, expensive and effective asset away from our kids, and that's a, that's a tough pill to swallow. We know that we have children with literacy needs, math needs, and yes, we're pulling our teachers to develop them, but now we're also providing a substitute teacher, which may have great intentions, but certainly not the skill level of our great teachers. So we really want to maximize all of our time. If we can scroll down, just to special education, please, for just a moment. Actually, go up one, please. Right there. So as we're working with the data and pulling all these different pieces apart, you know, thanks Sam Abell for really digging into the evidence statement reports from Park. Again, this breaks down how our students perform on all of the different standards. I've referenced in this document our skill sequence, and ensuring that our children are moving through their content in the most effective way possible. If you think about it like this, we have three, or, we probably have 18 weeks, plus or minus, until Park. So we have an opportunity right now, in the board talk, and Bob talked about, we want action right now. We have an opportunity right now to look at where we're at, look at the skills and standards that we've covered, and make sure that we have a plan moving forward over the next, you know, three, five months, to make sure that we're teaching all the skills and content that our children need, and they're going to be assessed on. So, so a lot of that information is in those evidence statement analysis reports, and we'll, we spent some time with our building principals today, trying to pull those apart. Um, as we shared out, as we were ending our meeting, a number of them are going to look at how to use those with their teachers right away. Next, Steve.
Yeah, I have a few questions. One of which, I was, I was curious as to, do we do a student survey in terms of their commitment to success in Park? Or is that, you know, to sort of imply that when they take the test, they will, you know, do the best they can? And one reason I ask is that my experience, you know, with, working with kids who have varying degrees of commitment to something that does not equal an exact grade, is that, you know, some kids are, you know, very much interested in seeing how they can do, and other kids are not. Um, you know, and I've had, you know, students who have taken, you know, the math test, you know, they're done in 10 minutes, as opposed to 15, and they're mainly reading their book. You know, these are, sometimes honest kids just really don't read their book, and sometimes there are kids who just aren't interested in testing. And I think this might speak to this idea of opting out, which I, I still can't really get my head around, that what do you mean by opting out? You know, it's like opting out of school day, you know, you don't, you know, this is part of school, you don't opt out, you're here for, for school. And I guess, maybe as a, as a cultural level, in our schools, this might be something we, we really need to address, you know, at a, at a parent connection level of, do parents realize how important this is? I know that a couple of years ago, you know, some of the conversations I've had with parents, or, you know, people in the community was that, oh, my kids are going to waste their time at this park, it's ridiculous, I'm going to protest, without even really understanding what the park was, you know? Really not understanding what the common core was, it was just kind of like this, you know, rallying cry, you know, for nothing, it didn't seem to be anything behind it. And I think that that is something that we're going to have to address, and I think that is certainly part of the culture of, of academic success. It's a, you know, it's creating a, you know, climate and culture of, of, you know, a vibrant classroom that wants to really, you know, measure themselves and see how they're doing well, as opposed to just looking at it as, okay, you know, the district says we have to take this test. I can think that's, you know, a measure on the teacher evaluation, the degree to which the teacher is selling the importance and the connection that this has to the larger picture. So again, you know, this is just something I see as, you know, someone's opting out in a lot of them, and not like one or two where you're like, okay, well, you know, we respect your, you know, decision to take your kid home that day, because they're taking a personal day, but this is just, to me, not acceptable as a decision that parents can make, certainly in math, and this is something I think needs to be addressed. With this, I would even suggest, maybe looking at the degree to which, you know, parents are connected to being actively involved in the school, and, you know, being a part of the activities that are not necessarily academic, certainly really add to this community of academia and philosophy. And I think that this would also, it would be something that we could really capitalize. But also, lastly, the student survey, find out what is their affect toward taking this sort of test, I think would, would give us a lot of information.
So this thing has actually come up twice tonight, you brought it up, and Mr. Brown brought it up, is that family and community engagement. So we, I've referenced that quality framework that Parker will have to complete. Standard six actually deals with the community and family engagement, there's a couple of pieces, part of this communication, but the other part is, how effectively are we helping our community understand how important this work is? To be clear, we test kids way too much. I will be the first person out in front of that parade. And so we can remove some of our own hurdles, we can take a look at our winter math assessment, and we can take it, take a look at some of the other assessments that we're using during the year that are, one, taking away from classroom time, but also bringing kids out on assessments. And, you know, again, it's not a heist, it's just, it's one opportunity for our children to show what they can do. We need to help them understand that it's important, but also help our parents understand as well. So I kept those pieces, we can have some more.
I, um, I have a couple of questions I want to ask. I was looking at this, of course, one, I want to make a statement, closing this achievement gap here is very critical, because our kids are triggered late to HF, and there too, there's a gap that needs to be filled. And one thing that I continue to hear, and I know, we've got to get this, this Parker piece, we've got to get, and we've got to get it right, and we're at least as close to right as we can, and we've really been working. I, one thing that I continue to hear, and it's not just in this district, it's in the high school district, it's kind of puzzling from the title taxes that we pay, and the kind of levies that we continue to, we told to vote on, is that even with our, our schools being committal, and even at HF, that seems to be acceptable. It's great, it's good to be committal, but I'm, I'm waiting for, before I went to this district, HF was a riverbed district, I'm waiting for us to go to that next level. I know we got to clear these hurdles at Parker, but just to just settle for, okay, committal, mediocrity of it all, I'm just waiting somehow that we, we've got to be able to partner together to get this piece together, to be able to collaborate, and we, we've been able to do that, that's one thing before I came to settle with the board, that I know that we needed to do more of this collaborating with the high school, for the success of our children there. But, and we got to have them reach back and look back as well. We've got to continue that, because if we don't continue, and I don't think, but I think we have a very short window to do it. We do it as long as we need to do it, but the urgency isn't there, it has been there. So my point is, we've got to look at all of this, it's a lot of moving pieces here. When I look at the absenteeism, when I think about my older daughter who went to Parker twelve, about seven years ago, versus my nun- twelve, about seven years ago versus my younger daughter who graduated last year, I'm not saying we pay kids to go to school, but there was certainly a different attitude and a different culture around perfect attendance. They used to give awards and certificates to kids who came to school, whereas when my younger daughter, one year she got perfect attendance, nothing was standing out for her, as I told her, that this is what we do in this house. We go to school, we're less, can't go to school. And the thing is, we, we have to continue to kind of give our kids some type of motivation because they need that. They need to be inspired, they need to know that even going forward, even in the work world, you know, nobody's an award, you become to work every day, you get paid to come. Well, we need to recognize. So I think that we need to give a little bit more of that, especially kids that have perfect attendance, because that kind of went out the way and went out the window. When I looked in here, I saw that, and I want to make sure that I understand about the increased communication part, about talking to students or avoiding letters of communicating when students miss four or more days of school. I, I think we need to get in there, even though it's a parent's responsibility to report their kids' accesses for whatever reason, but we need to intervene before he gets four. Because as I've been looking at this blue ribbon school district, this, 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 like I said, has a lot of moving pieces, but it ties into attendance as well. And I think if kids want to come to school and they have a reason to want to come to school and we can inspire them more, not just awarding them with attendance, but we have to have leaders in the classroom. And I commend a lot of our teachers, I have a great deal of respect. I know we wanted to teach you who were absent. And our kids, they, they, I'm not sure that they understood that their absenteeism, it impacts the continuity of learning, it impacts the quality of learning. I want to make sure that the leaders in these classrooms understand that piece. Just like we're talking about chronic absenteeism with our kids, it, it kind of goes over into some of our staff members and some of those who taught math at higher levels. And that impacted our children going into HF. And in fact, we're seeing some of that. Some of us had gone in extra support systems forums during the summer. Again, I'm back on the, the kind of dollars we're paying, because when I moved to this district, I liked a lot of other people, I look at my tax dollars and we intend to. So I want to know that, you know, and, and, and I'm sure that every, every resident, let's be just want to just be throwing out their money, they want to return their investment. And so we've got to continue to kind of look at these pieces. It's not just with our students, it's the leaders of those classrooms, but we've got to, we just want to make sure that we have the people in the right position teaching these courses, these higher level math courses as well for these kids so they are more prepared to go to HF. Sometimes I wonder, do we have that means right? So when you were doing this plan, and I, I kind of know the answer to this, I just want to make sure, your team, be it IDP, in special education, the curriculum, everybody sat down and worked together to put this, these answers to resolution to the questions we had together?
Yeah, there's more work to do on that arena. And I think that's where the quality framework standard is coming. Because that document, and actually, the Parker team started today. So, you know, you're going through these different indicators, there's a rubric, you have to list your evidence, your artifacts, all of these different pieces of proof, where your rating is. And then what we'll do is we'll come back from that document and set the plans to forward. Yeah, some of these were collaboratively developed, some of them weren't, frankly. And that's okay. That's okay. I think the urgency behind the responses and the potential solution here kind of highlights a lot of the work that's been done. And you said the word complex, and it is, there's a lot of moving parts to this. And that's okay. This is the work of good school districts. The rest of the elementary schools will begin working on a quality framework now. They're all commendable, that's fine. There are areas where we can improve and there's no reason to wait. We're, we're doing great things. And one of the points that I, I wanted to make, I don't know if I made as good a job as I wanted to last time making this point. The current school improvement plans are based on last year's math data and other achievement factors from the school year. Those who are involved collaboratively with the building leadership teams and all that, pulled them apart. Principals gave each other critical friend feedback, and then eventually we had those improved by the Board of Education. Those are really, really good plans. Now we have an opportunity to revise those. Now we have new information, when you know better, you can do better. And so we'll go back, we'll open up the plans, make the changes. Maybe we're not aggressive enough on our achievement gap goals, or maybe we need to step on our math a little bit. So now we'll go back, we'll revise those, we'll bring those back to the Board of Education. We talked about the consistent communication piece and Amy's here, our communication plan. And we've talked about some different ways we're going to start sending out information that's not dependent on a story being picked up by a newspaper, but just reaching out directly to our families outside of our visions, process. Because we have a lot of information to share. We have a lot of great things that are happening, certainly, but this work is also really interesting. When our parents want to know, and our community members with children in the past, without children currently, want to know that we are being good stewards of their tax dollars. And to a certain extent, we understand the connection between school district achievement, property taxes, and the perception of the community. So we will send out a lot of information so that everyone knows exactly what we're working on. If it's like in the past, people will step up to the place they hate. I'm an expert in this area, I can help with X, Y, and Z, or have you thought about, you know, the technical and the synergy, which I think we're really looking for.
Another thing, I just want to say two things really. The absenteeism, I was wondering, I think I sit on a discipline committee, we're looking at the attendance, and I know there are some ways that attendance has been being reported in the past, some types of attendances that may affect this piece in this report. So are those meaningful, that is, the students, yeah, I mean, all the way around, if a student is out healed, a student who can't, you know, make it to, to class because they're in, in a hospital, or some kind of condition, I mean, students that are out there playing sports, I mean, there's a little bit on a higher level, but, I mean, just the way that some of these accesses have been reported in the past, I'm not sure that we, we, we had them all right in the, you know, categorized the way that they should to the point here, it did not, it, it went against us, that's my point. So hopefully that picture can be a little bit.
Yeah, so just really briefly, we have not accurately, no. We've accurately collected that information. I will tell you, there's been variance between buildings, which has probably inserted some volatility. We have been with our building principals and administrative assistants in the last couple of weeks to go through that process. And you mentioned students who's, you know, in, in homebound education, and we send a tutor to the home home for 30 minutes, 45 minutes, an hour a day, but that's a day of attendance. We're not, we currently, there's a case where we weren't capturing that as attendance. Now, I'll tell you, the S and T number, you know, in District 161 is high, but that's only because I think it should be lower. We're 10%. High school's at 19%, right? We're, we're lower than surrounding districts, so it's important. I think we can make some headway there. Our movement from underperforming to commendable, commendable to exemplary will be by changing learning experiences for kids, matching the rigor of our expectations to the skills that they need, and then pair the proper instructional strategies to that work, and then sensitively measuring for our children who are accelerating, we need to keep going. For our children who are below and need to make some catch-up growth, let's catch them as far as we can. We have to know where they are, all of our kids. We need to make the classroom adjustments that are necessary. And at our peril, we cannot forget that middle 60% of children that come in every day and do what they're supposed to, they're flying under the radar because they always have their homework, they're not the top of the class, they're not the bottom of the class, but certainly they need to make sure they're being pushed as well. So, yeah, we have a lot of work to do, there's a lot of pieces where I think we can improve. And this plan is just the start.
And this is our chance, as one of my colleagues said, this is our, this is our opportunity to, to take this in the right direction so our scores won't continue to, instead of declining, they continue to go forward. The final piece I had, I'm just going to know because this is just a question that I have, and I know we talked about, and I'm not sure that we talked about it so much in this board, but grade centers, can you find, remind us why we don't do them or what the, I'm just curious, I'm just asking this. Why we don't know. The reason I'm asking, as I think for the research, and looking into some of the schools, even our surrounding schools, I think one of it really does break. They are having a lot of success there. I'm not saying that we should, but I'm asking the question as to why we, what that conversation was in the past about that.
I can say with some scope to this, that, and this is a question I run into a lot too. It's a different model from our community schools or community K, but, you know, Parker is in fact a grade center, it's a 16th grade center. I had talked to Dale Mitchell years ago, he had made the transition, and it did not, it was not a smooth transition from one year to the next. It really took a number of years to, to adjust to that. As I believe, and I could be mistaken on this, there was a number of factors related to transportation, cost effectiveness, projecting, you know, what certain school members would be. And at the time, 12 years ago, home would have felt that that was a good move for them. One of the issues is, in terms of really looking at, well, is it better or worse? Is that, you know, once you go through a cycle of parents, there's no one around to say, it was better the way it was before. All you have are people who, and home is an excellent district, right? They have great teachers, I mean, they have great administration, as we do, and I think they're great partners in the future schools of the two, home and Phos. You know, it certainly, you know, it, it worked out for them, and they, and I think they pulled it together, they communicated it well. It is not something that you enter lightly, because it is a huge, huge shift. And sometimes people freak out and say, that's it, I mean. As a matter of fact, a lot of the conversations I've heard in the last six years have been, if you move to a grade centers, I'm not here. You know, so I would say before we really get into that, which is not necessarily what we're, yeah, is, you know, maybe among support members, we can certainly have conversations. And then maybe in the future, if we, everyone's will look at that, we can really look at actual data, but it's, that has been something that, it's been really divisive and at some point it just, there wasn't enough interest in it. And I want to say five years ago, there was some mention of it, and then it just fizzled out.
Right, that's why I'm, that's why I ask. I think you just sit on the board on the white homes, or, you know, the conversation will be really, and, and much, but I just, with the type of property that, I didn't know, I didn't know, so I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know the history of that conversation. John probably has more institutional knowledge than anyone else on this board with respect to that. But I do know, you use the word complex. I think you use the word complex as well. We do have a very, our, we have, it is a complex issue, or set of issues that we are working with. And I think even to add the discussion on, to the complex issue of how to move forward with Parker, we added the issue of should we think about this, and I think that will, I don't want there to be anything to distract us from what the challenges we have and are sitting right in front of our face that have been, that for, for many of us, it's what moved us to run for boards in the first place. So I think the problem is complex. I think the solution needs to be comprehensive. So it's not just about quality instruction, it's about quality leadership, it's about parent engagement and commitment, and in a different kind of way than we have felt and experienced it. It's about student behavior and buying, it's about our partners in the community, how do you get them involved? It has to be an apprehensive solution. It's not just about instructions, it's not just about discipline. We can't attack the solution being narrative focused that way. It really, it really does have to, we have to look at all of those pieces individually, but also collectively in terms of how do we move the needle? Because you can't, can't just focus on quality instruction and assume that that would be it.
Now, education, educating our community is a whole comprehensive, not the whole child. So, I agree.
I have a question. One of the things that, that's mentioned here is alignment to the strategic plan, and we've talked about this. And so I just wonder what you're thinking about in terms of a timeline for getting ready to rewrite the strategic plan so that we, we're not looking backwards or, or doing double duty? Because I want, I want, I mean, this is an important work, and it's work that should go on over the next several years. And as Michelle just said, yes, a comprehensive plan, but it needs to match what our big plan is. So what are you thinking in terms of the timeline?
I think there'll have to be a handshake back and forth in order to make it work. Because realistically, in the spring, we'll recommend the plan for 2019, 20, to update the strategic plan in the year five. So I think part of that will be great to get into that process, how do we want to rewrite the Parker plan specifically, one that's submitted to the state by February 28th? And how do we want to incorporate the new information that we have? Maybe the group is together, really wants to dig into the middle school model, or a problem base where it all, you pick it, there's a lot of things out there. But how are we going to make sure that targets that we've set match the expected rigor that we're moving forward with the strategic plan? So I think it has to be part of it. But realistically, we will have to move forward with our plan in the best way that we can, implement it and work it to depth. And then once we get to our strategic plan, look at the plan at Parker, make better changes that we have to do, and create some alignment there.
So the other question I have, so this is, January 31st is the date, right?
January 31st, the framework has to be completed. February 28th, the plan is due to the state.
So then I, I guess I'm anticipating and I'm hopeful that you'll come back with the needs that you have that are associated with this.
Kathy, if you would scroll, just reading this, there's a very incomplete timeline because the, the bulk of this timeline will come from the framework, because, no, seven. If we're going to do it, let's do it. So, you know, there are multiple standards in the framework, seven to be exact, there are multiple indicators per standard. The team at Parker is currently assessing each one, identifying the artifacts, that will build the bulk of their plan. But generally speaking, they're working on the quality framework now, I would expect to have that done way before January 31st, but the next 60 days, we'll bring that back to the Board of Education. The team will start to work on the final work plan. I'd like to bring it back here by February 11th, because we have one more meeting after that to, to get forth feedback with some time ahead, we're going to make changes. So the board will have two formal meetings in between the time that we have to submit it and the time that the, the team is finished with the quality framework. So it will be tight, I would say by the 11th, that's why the team, hopefully the team will finish the framework ahead of time. It's going to be tight, but again, that's okay. This is hard work, you know, but the expectations are tough. But after those 60 days, get that final plan submitted to the board by the 28th of February, then we'll have short-term goals. There are going to be things in that plan that we submit on the 28th that we've done between now and then, you know, looking at student schedules, looking at interventions, doing those sorts of things. So I suppose we can retrofit some of those pieces into the February 28th plan. It will also contain, you know, March 1st through the end of the school year, plans and expectations, and then for the following three years. Because realistically, you know, we want to get out of underperforming, get into commendable, and get to exemplary, and that's, that's the next race that ultimately we have to run. In order to do that though, we really have to hit on all these different cylinders. And it will take time, it will take three years, and it'll take three years for the elementary companies, frankly, to get to exemplary because of the different publics, frankly, to get to exemplary, because of the different areas that we want to address and the depth we want to address.
So when you come back, I'll go on February, you'll come back with any type, or at least the February 28th, with resource, I know.
Oh, absolutely.
Anything that you need from us, right?
100%. So I would hope that by February 11th, we have a draft of what that looks like. February 25th, we've, because I believe February 25th is the next, the second peccow in February. That's when we're saying, okay, this plan is fairly firm, these are the financial aspects that we're looking at, these are, you know, the human resources that we're looking at, these are the time resources that we're looking at. Get that last set of feedbacks submitted to the board, or submitted to the state, three days later.
And then remind me, Dana, is there accountability that the state, does the state revisit prior to a year to say, "How close are you on this plan, and what are, and what type of internal evaluation will accompany whatever you bring to us to say, "This is how you'll know, this is how we'll know"?
Yeah, so the state hasn't defined, I think I'm understanding your question correctly, the state hasn't told us yet, so we, say we get to Park this year, and our scores are higher, which we, we know they will be, they haven't defined yet what, what they will say is, "You are no longer underperforming," or "You have moved from underperforming to commendable." Right now, what the message is, is that it's a three-year process. You can opt for the planning year for the first year, they will continue to monitor for three years. What we don't know yet is, within that three years, will that rating change within there? So they're continuing to update us, and working with the Illinois Power Project, those structures will be defined within that, but that's pending, and that was one of the questions that we asked, is based on what our scores are in the spring, could our rating change as soon as next fall? And that is still pending.
And then internally, what, what, what will you, will you all, what, what will accompany this, that will be our guide for, yes, we're making specific improvements in these seven areas?
I think we have to have one indicator. Now, some of them will be, just by the nature of the indicators, some of them will be process. Like, so, you know, standard six, increasing family engagement, it could be, we will have a number of specific sessions on X, Y, and Z. We'll have, you know, those aren't the best, but if we have the right plan, if we're implementing the process pieces, then we can reasonably expect to have the result of here. We'll have to build in, I think we have to build in those benchmarks. So the way I have consistent conversations here, let's have it out in every cow, yeah? There's no reason why we can't, it doesn't have to take, you know, an hour and a half, but it certainly has to be a conversation about, okay, you said you were going to do this, did you? Great, what's next for the next, the next cow meeting we have in 30 days? What are you going to accomplish, and what's the team? So we have to build in the short-term benchmark, the long-term benchmarks are the data pieces, but Cam also brought, but I was asking, where are those lead data indicators? Specialized students, how many minutes are we missing per week? Right? How many additional minutes are we providing of instruction per week? It's not a true data point, in that, you know, that it's an A, B, C, D, et cetera, but it will tell us whether or not we're getting our targets, and at least giving ourselves and our kids the best chance to be successful as we move forward.
So when do you anticipate on having this timeline for improvement in final access, no longer in the tentative stage?
By February 28th. Our challenge is, we're, we're going to be held responsible for the quality framework. So if we do not spend a lot of time analyzing our current performance in relation to those standards, we, we're going to miss the target, because the state's going to come in and say, "Okay, you know, it's standard two, and it's indicator one, which is, you know, building, building the district leadership teams, et cetera, et cetera, where are you?" If we haven't addressed those, then we're not going to move forward the way that we want to. So we have to make sure that we work through this, provide our targets, but also have our plan to move forward, and that will directly build the plan that's submitted to the Board on the 11th initially, but then to the state on the 20th.
So the board will not hear anything else with regard to progress towards this body of work until February 11th?
Oh, no, absolutely not. So we'll come back and share information on the quality frameworks, and how we're analyzing and assessing, but again, it's hard to create the plan without the effective needs assessment. So that's going to be the primary focus for the team over the next, you know, 30, 60 days.
Can we give a temperature reading, and forgive me if this has already been addressed, can we give a temperature reading of how we're doing now at Parker, as opposed, as compared to last year, that will just give us a sense of what kind of...
Well, that's...
In January.
Okay.
And that data will probably be our next large data point that we can look at and compare, because again, think about last year, how did we miss the signs resulting in the Park data we achieved last year? I'm not convinced now that we have the right measures in place that would tell us, ooh, you know, this class of grade level is ahead of target, or this class of grade level is behind.
Right, and that's, that's my sort of underlying concern about the Park anyway, is that, well, that's, last year is five months, you know, that's the complaint on the teacher's side is, well, thanks for the, you know, the five months review, you know, something that happened, you know, last year, you know, which is why, you know, certainly the math, score for reading and math has been, you know, very effective. But, and then, just going forward, I, you know, again, I think it would really benefit us to have something where we could look at as our own index, that teachers could use and, and, at different benchmarks throughout the year, to say, okay, let's look at, you know, can they site check to evidence in the ELA class? You know, where are they able to, what are their, you know, pre-eltual grade skills? You know, what are they looking at in sixth grade, or, you know, whatever it is we're measuring, by which we could, you know, within our community, within our district, have a sense of, of how they're doing. So, you know, like with our new math curriculum, like what is there, is built in benchmarks, you know, maybe that might be, just as a start, to give us some idea of, okay, well, have we improved, you know, where, what's their temperature reading now? What's their progress monitoring for this, the course of, you know?
What would you use, your main thing, right? Sort of.
Sure.
And so what would you use? Because this is the problem I have with the data, right? We have math data that doesn't, did not indicate to us a problem.
Right.
ELA scores. We have Park data that suggests there is a problem with ELA scores. So my take on that is either, you know, the teachers are in there every day, so either, so how could they have not seen this coming? Right? So we assume, we assume the Park scores are valid, how could we have not seen this? And then the only explanation I can come up with is that, in their daily work of doing the formative assessments, if they set the bar too low, right? If the kids are getting all 90s in formative assessments, they do the work, so now they get 100 on the post-assessment, and everything looks to the teacher like it's moving well, but they set the bar too low, then maybe that would explain how we got to drop the ELA scores. But I can't really see, and so then, and if that's the case, the answer to me is, well, the formative assessments are, are all we have. But what else, we're testing on math.
Sure.
So what else could they possibly do to have spotted this, and can we do right now, so that we don't have this problem?
Yeah, can I add on to that?
Yeah, just to clear, I don't have the answer, I don't teach middle school.
That's good, that's a question ought to be posed over here.
Yes.
Not in here.
Yes, absolutely. So one of the things that's highlighted in the plan is, in looking at the evidence statement analysis report, that can help, that helps us pinpoint what were the exact standards that we did not do well on. We know what standards our students were exposed to and tested on, and we can see clearly where they didn't perform. Coupled with that is the evidence table that's linked in that report, that aligns to the Park-released items. Park releases a set number of items that students should expect, can anticipate seeing, they're not the exact items, but they're as close-aligned items that we're going to get, that we could, we will use to monitor leading up to Park. So our monitoring of that just needs to be much more intentional, making sure that we're giving those systematically, as we address those standards that we didn't do well on. Our formative assessments that are built into our curriculum, I don't know if it's that the bar is too low, I think they're too granular, I think they're capturing snapshots within a specific lesson, that's not necessarily what Park is asking. The Park-released items are asking for that deep analysis of standards that the test is asking for. So I, I believe, and we talked about it with the principals today, I believe that's our best shot of having something to monitor towards success on Park along the way. And while there's not, all of the released items doesn't, certainly, it's supposed to do the same, everything that will be assessed on, there's enough of the released items that we should be able to monitor leading up to giving the assessment this spring.
So do we have a good sense of specific subject areas that we can pour on, or we're still doing that analysis?
Yeah, so looking at, for example, eighth grade ELA, we, that's, that chart is linked in the board report, every standard that was assessed, we were below the state average, as well as below where we previously were. So that just, in that grade level, that tells us that we really need to go deeper with all of those standards, and I'm not sure if I said before, eighth grade ELA. If you look at that same report that's in the packet for sixth grade, we were on par with the state in all the two of the standards that really hurt sixth grade, and that's what kept sixth grade at a level versus going up. So my point is that we know what those standards are, we know what to hit harder, that points to gaps in what we taught, not necessarily lack of, the student, lack of knowledge of the students that were in front of us, but, but we didn't hit it hard enough. And we have the released items aligned to those standards that we missed. I think that's our best shot, making sure that we can tackle this leading up to the spring.
So I understand how that explanation would, I understand how that explains why we would have maybe missed this on the sixth graders, but we're also saying that we basically failed across the board in ELA with eighth graders, so I don't understand how our teachers could have missed that. I don't know if it was a whole year without someone raising their hand and saying, "Hey, no, these kids aren't doing well."
Yeah, it's not that the, they did, they did less achievement than they did previously. It's not that they, they tanked on everything, or that everything was at the bottom, it's that there wasn't enough, based on that data, in my opinion, there wasn't enough monitoring the deep analysis of the standards that Park asked for. So we, we hit it, we covered it, our kids got it somewhat in that grade level, we needed to go deeper. And so, again, I think the released items are our best, best chance at really making sure we're getting that deep analysis of it.
Another set of questions I have is, you know, all of this data, and this, Park data is probably a sort of narrow focus on ELA scores, but the real problem, I think, is that, or I don't want to lose sight of the bigger picture, which is, our goal for the district is for Parker to improve, right? And so, what we want to see, I think, as a board, is both math and ELA to go up. So in addition to the ELA scores being, having a somewhat alarming drop that, you know, shouldn't have happened, the math scores didn't move up, they kind of just, we implemented a new curriculum, we trained teachers on it, we supposedly are, you know, the teachers are out there assessing each student and figuring out where they need to grow and, and moving them forward, and yet, we just kind of hovered where we were. So I have a concern that we're not, you know, I, I can live with the ELA drop for a year, if you can tell me that we've, we've removed everyone forward, and that was unfortunate, but next year is going to be better, but the fact that math didn't move up either gives me some concern. And at a more granular level on the math, you know, I think we've acknowledged that we have many, many kids who are multiple years behind where they should be. I don't know, I'm not really persuaded that the district as a whole has plans to move in forward. I think we've acknowledged, everyone here knows that, you know, the amount of work, hypothetical sixth grader is, is operating two grade levels below, that kid's got to put in, you know, hundreds of hours of additional work to get to, say, 11th or 12th grade, right? And it doesn't seem to be able to plan for that in place yet. The board has for at least a year and a half been saying, you know, we have this catch reserves, and we have this problem, and tell us how you want to solve this problem, but I don't think we have a plan yet for moving those kids up. And the test machine reflects that, but we're just maintaining, not actually making progress.
So I think the plan, so our current school improvement plans have an achievement goal, or achievement gap goal. We have the additional intervention time at Parker, we added, you know, the Saturday school minutes to try to get those kids in. Again, it becomes a, how do we increase the volume of those minutes? So that's the current plan to address this. We have to get the kids into interventions for a longer period of time.
How are we going to know? Good night, I guess until math or Park testing in the years, I don't know whether we know whether any of those are supported.
Well, two things, one, I think we have to look at our assessments. And we've all mentioned that they may be too granular, that's fine, but what else are we going to use them? So if those aren't going to be the ones that we move forward with, great. We have to have assessments that we reasonably, we have to have assessments that reasonably inform our progress on the Illinois curriculum standards. I'm not as concerned about Park, as long as we're teaching the right standards that, I do believe that Park does measure the right standards. So as long as we're providing the depth of instruction on those, we'll be okay. But we have to have the right assessments in the formative process, so that we can make changes to classes, we can make changes to intervention time, all those different pieces, now, as opposed to, you know, at the end of May, we have a month of school.
Yeah, I think, I think your question is a very valid one, because I think what the question that you're asking is, why aren't we seeing improvement? Because I think this, this school improvement plan typically always have goals in them. And so, you know, I don't think that we should assume that this was missed, because again, this, this did not happen three months ago, like this, we have been having these conversations for the past several years. So it seems like the, a piece of the assessment tool that you are speaking about, there's a piece of it that's quantitative, but there's also a piece of it that's qualitative as well. And so, it's not enough to just look at the data and say, "We are not improving." We have to have an understanding of why students are not improving. And it's that assessment piece that I don't know what that looks like. I don't know how much of that is instruct, we just don't know. I mean, and so, to me, yeah, we need to look at both the quantitative and qualitative piece of that to figure out, so how are we going, what have we got new difference? Because we'll continue to do school improvement plans, I will continue to have goals, we'll continue to look at the data, but if we don't see improvement, then what? I mean, and I think that is, that's where the frustration is, that because we have not seen the improvement, and it's very difficult, it seems, for people to articulate, why aren't we seeing improvement?
Well, I think about how many years, let's boil it down, but how many years have you set out for, and that school, had school plans come to you, right? So I think if all those plans worked, and you grew one and a half percent per year, you'd be 100 percent okay.
I don't know that, I don't know if any of them have worked, like I didn't have a break.
What I'm saying is, they've been coming for decades to the board, and we're going to improve this much. We have to, we have to have a way to measure it, we have to, we have to see that progress. We have to look at the ways that we're measuring. On the quantitative side, then, as you mentioned, on the qualitative side, to really get into what's really happening, if the data doesn't tell us.
Right, I mean, I think, in the last meeting, when we were talking about our, our students, our special needs students, there was a comment or a question about IEPs, and going into those IEPs, and looking to see what went up there, or, oh, like that, that's a piece that just looking at the data from Park does not tell us. Like that, that's a piece that just looking at the data from Park does not tell us. But if there is an assessment that's done and where you actually discover that you know that there actually are goals in every kid's IEPs. Like that is a fundamental problem that has a direct impact on whether or not we are going to see improvement in that particular set of kids.
Did you guys talk about seventh grade though, a couple weeks ago, or did you just focus on eighth grade?
I think, I think those eighth grade ELA scores attracted everyone's attention and that's sort of my, brought my team up. Did the same thing. And then I went left at meeting and I said, no, that's really not the problem. So if you have thoughts on seventh grade, I'd like to hear it.
Seventh grade is almost as shocking, the change from sixth to seventh.
You're talking today's seventh grade or last spring's seventh grade?
Twenty eighteen seventh grade versus twenty seventeen sixth grade.
Yeah.
You have a doubling of did not meet. That statistically, those two moves, eighth and seventh, are almost, those have got to be two or three standard deviation events. That does not happen, it doesn't happen together in the same year. One of the things Nina and I talked about today on the phone was, are we positive there's not some technological glitch that happened? Not testing day, or testing week, or whatever. I would not dismiss that out of hand, that possibility, as remote as it might seem.
There was, they all, my kids came home, so the test stopped, and then they had to, similarly to what happened with that, right? So they had to stop.
We raised that, so that came up two weeks ago.
I saw it in the list of questions that were posed and.
I had the same vague recollection that Karen had. And so I was, you seem to remember something happened, but. So I agree 100%, so that, you know, either, the scale of the drop is so significant that unless you told me, unless we replace 20% of our student population, it's very difficult to explain. So maybe there's something wrong with testing. And the fact that math data doesn't seem to indicate a severe drop also is a reason for concern. But I think where I came around to that in the last few weeks, thinking about it, is saying, you know what, I really don't care. This is what led me to the hall. Let's focus on why there wasn't improvement. So we can send data back, have the whole team here do hours and hours and hours of research and admission, figure it out. Maybe my vague recollection is correct, maybe it's not, maybe there was something bad on test, maybe there was a fight that day, I don't know. Okay, so the bottom line is, the school as a whole needs to be moving forward. And the math scores do not show forward progress, they show negative. And the Park math score don't show forward progress, they show negative. So that's my only point about, let's keep our eye on them. Look, I really want to know the answers. It bothers me that we don't know the answers, but at some point, it's part of our play of time. And I want, and if we have to do that, I would say let's focus on the bigger one. That was the point.
And, and I, my, I guess my takeaway is, you asked about improvements. And we're expecting to see non-main maintenance improvements given, everything else. But importantly, it doesn't happen overnight. And it doesn't typically happen drastic in a short amount of time. But we want to start seeing a trend in the right direction. Just as we don't expect it to go gamebusters overnight, so too do we not expect to see the bottom fall out overnight. And I really hope they should. So I really question the veracity of what I've seen here from a purely mathematical standpoint. And why it's important, it's important for a lot of reasons, but it's important because if we're all going to put really smart, accomplished professionals in a room to figure out how we're going to fix the problem, we need to be darn sure that a problem exists. Now, I don't want to be chickenpox, but I would suggest we spend some time re-verifying that something didn't go wrong during the test. You just do not see numbers like this in two grade levels. And I just don't, seventh grade doesn't stick out as much as eighth, but had eighth been kind of normal, and if you pull up the math scores, they're all kind of normal. If eighth would have been normal, we would have been talking about seventh grade for six hours on end. So to see two of them there in the same year is rude.
Yeah, you can go back and work on that. And so we'll keep bringing this topic back, I think, we'll keep generating questions. And as we move through the framework, we'll target some of those. To Michelle's point, that timeline, which will be so important, frankly, we do the deliverables. What are we doing, you know, from March 1st, you know, to April 1st? And then, you know, from March 1st until the end of May, end of June? And what does it look like for the summer, or when do you measure that? And then we have three years of that. You can always change it. But I think it's going to be important for the Parker team to lay out those expectations so there's a clear plan. It's going to hit all of those different standards. It's going to be comprehensive and absolutely, it's going to hit ELA and math. It's also going to hit that parent involvement piece, it's going to hit the community connections, it's going to hit building leadership teams and organizational structures within the school. It has to address all of those pieces. The doors open, you might as well walk through it. What we'll expect is that same level of focus and intensity of the elementary buildings as well. The areas where they need to improve, let's get those pieces in place, whether it be exemplary or not, it's great that they are, but I think we can get more.
Another thing I want to put to you, and I accessed at the last meeting, I wanted to know if our students, our IEP students, did they have those that needed accommodations that they may need for testing, and the supports that they may need for testing? I'm not sure if you recognize that I was trying to see, because I was going to.
It's on there. But one of the accommodations, we absolutely make sure we get the accommodations they need. We have to mix separate testing groups for Park for them, depending on if there's even one-on-one testing or small group testing. There's a lot of accommodations in Park for any student, but the IEP students are specifically delineated. And we know a lot of the delineations just from their IEP cycling. So if an IEP was written in March, we know from March through the next Park testing what their accommodations are. The accommodations have to match their classroom accommodations, their state, their district testing accommodations, and their state accommodations. So it's a buildup. You can't just get an accommodation for Park if you don't need it for a classroom assessment.
Right, right.
So, so we make sure that what they need for the classroom is delivered in the classroom assessment level, is delivered in the district assessment level, which is on WVA, and then in the state assessment level. But we will continue to make sure that we are doing that and make sure that they are all given each and every one. To the best of analysis, they were given what they were, they should have been given.
So when you saw this data with IEP students, and now that you have them, and others who are along and working together in this, was there anything in here that stood out to you or anything that you went back and worked with to look and take a look at to see what we could immediately do better to do? Not have a repeat of this in that area that IEP students? I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking a question, you can't answer me now, but I'm just saying, you know, when I see something that we see, I mean, we can't be reactionary to what we see, you know? And some people become reactionary. We know that this happened over a period of time, and I'm asking you, you being the director and I put you on the spot. When you saw this in the IEP, was one of the categories, what, what did it mean in terms of, were you able to go back right away? And began to dig in or make changes or?
I'm kind of working with, I mean, we're working with the team, we're looking at various pieces. It's not just the IEP students that have that, so.
We had two, I get what you're saying, we had two, we had IEP that was flagged in a street report. You know, you know, like, you know, from John, from Cameron, he said, this goal, we dig deeper, it's a lot further than that. But this is what we're going to fly that in the state. So IEP and disadvantaged, disadvantaged students. So I'm saying, you know, I realize on a bigger level, but for you, was there anything that you could?
There's a couple things the special ed team did look at. And we're meeting together with all of our special education staff on the fifth, which is our SIP thing, to address some of the areas that we think may, may be able to be quickly improved and review of that to go forward. Some of it works on looking, again, looking at the depth of our goals and the level of expectation that we have in our goals. Our goals are the splinter skills that the kids are missing. And we want to make sure we're targeting the exact splinter skill that they're missing, to fill in the gap, help them achieve. And it depends on what level of IEP student it is, if it's a resource level versus a self-contained level. We're looking at the same rigor to try and increase that, but we're also looking at the variance and the different levels. One of the first things I did was I looked to see where all the kids taking the right test, because there's an alternative test. But to qualify for the DLM, the alternative test, you'd have to be very significant in order to qualify for that. So at this point, I would say yes, all of our kids are taking, who's taking the right test.
And the accent is, you're looking into that a lot more, to see if that's any counter.
As Dana mentioned, we, we don't know that we're recording some of our homebound students in our attendance system.
One last question, tied up to what Cam was talking about. Do we have systems, or do you have systems in place for a teacher that says, I've given this form of assessment, 75% of my students have failed it? What do I do? Is there a process in place for a teacher that does recognize, yeah, they didn't get it, I taught it, it's the standard I'm supposed to teach, but they're lost, I need to move on? Or the PBA is coming up, or the comprehensive exam is coming? Is there, is there a coach that comes in? What happens? I know I've had my own children from home and say, everybody failed except three of us, or whatever the numbers are of the day for the assessment. And I just, I wonder, gosh, you know, what does a teacher do? What, what process in place for resolving that? You can't just move on because they didn't get it. So what, what process do we have in place for that?
Well, part of it is communication, that expectation, that, you know, we're teaching children non-cazze. And if you can go back and forth on whether it's more important to teach or for the students to learn, I don't care. The kids have to know those skills, they have to be masters of them. When we have data points that show that kids are mastering those, we have to respond. I'll tell you, there's a question, someone in the document that talks about, what are we going to replicate?
Yeah.
That's a very specific skill, that we're going to take to the elementary, up to the junior high level. The elementary teaching, the structure, our professional learning communities do a really good job of, here's our data, here's where our children are, this is what we have to do moving forward. Are you guys, you're in, okay, you have any ideas on this skill, if this is what I'm thinking, are we, are we in, okay, let's move forward. Let's come back in a week, share our new data points, and then let's go back at it again. I think they do a really good job at the elementary level of collaborating that fashion, and I think we take that to the junior high. So I would say no, not consistently. There's not a process for, here's my editor of data, here's my formative data, I need some help. Whether it's a grade level partner or a professional coach, I would say that no, no type of consistent process.
Any other questions or comments regarding? Okay, so we will.
Every meeting, every meeting, we'll come back. What we'll do is we'll update any changes on the original questions. I'll try to compile these questions into an effective structure. And then we'll update the timelines and all the rest of it.
Okay, next item on the agenda, literacy program update. Are there any questions or concerns?
We just wanted to bring this back, absolutely, you were in one of Ready Gen at kindergarten through fifth grade, and my perspective is at sixth through eighth grade. We spent a lot of time before school, during institute days, providing professional development. Three days so far probably, four full days, for each teacher, just about, professional development down the literacy program. Our administrators right now are in the process of teaching it. I think it's really important for them to have a clear understanding of what this program is. It is not the way that a number of us came up, teaching literacy. And so all the administrators and case managers, principals, assistant principals, et cetera, administrators as well, are pairing up with classroom teachers to get in there, teach for a week, really experience the program and be able to support it more effectively. Anything else for you?
Yes, I just wanted to add, we just gave our first performance-based assessment, which is our written expression of how students did on the teaching throughout the unit. Our program really stresses that reading is the breathing in, writing is the breathing out. So those two topics are not, those two subjects are not taught separately. The writing is a direct reflection of their understanding and reading. We did a district-wide scoring of the PBA, the performance-based assessment, just to get an idea of, are we constantly looking at how students did and what we're calling an excellent on that assessment, what we're calling needs improvement on that assessment? The discussions were good with the teachers, we need to continue those discussions throughout the school year as we're giving the PBA so we get stronger in recognizing our students' areas of strength and opportunities for growth, both in reading and writing.
So part of that work happened at the beginning of October, if I remember correctly. And the conversation that thought was fascinating, because it was an opportunity with the same assessment for people to say, do we have the same expectations? We're the same rigor at Los More Hills, and we do it Western, and we do it Serena, et cetera. At the elementary level in our, with this literacy program, and I think that's the next step. We have to be able to guarantee that we have the same expectations for all kids. Once we have those same expectations, we have to guarantee and make that commitment to our kids and to our community that we're providing the resources, whether it's acceleration at the high end or the low end, to move students along. So I think it was a really good conversation with our instructional coaches, led a big chunk of that work. But that's an indicator, that's a canary in the coma, right? The performance-based assessments, the end-of-unit assessments, all those kept moving consistent from school to school, from grade level to grade level. Our work now is which one, which of those data points are we going to capture, upload to Forecast Five? And then which ones are we going to have district-wide, either articulation or just conversations about as we analyze the data moving forward.
Any questions? How's our ed in 2019?
Yes, just wanted to bring this back to the board. I feel like we bring it every year, and that's okay. But just want to get some feedback from the board, if there is any. I will tell you so many positive comments about the authorization experience this year. We went to Camp Timberley in Wisconsin, and, you know, thank you to Sherry and all the administrators that have gone, but for all the organizational work that they did, it's hard. Takes a lot of time, we have a full-time job, but all this goes into it. But we did want to talk about the financial contributions, the board's contribution this year, was $77,780. There's an attached spreadsheet to the report that I wanted to share as well. You can see where, you know, how much went to Timberley, for each school, the buses, you know, teachers' vehicles, guest teachers, all those different pieces. Minus the student payments that they received and any scholarships for low-income students, and then we have our total. So it is not obscene, it is not, you know, for four elementary schools, you know, we serve quite a few students, and it's fantastic, but it is, it's expensive. $77,000, it's a teacher, it is an excellent program. We have 270 fifth graders right now. And now's the time we're going to sign the contract for 2019 and 2020.
You know, mind me, and I don't have the data in front of me. Did I remember the increase or the decrease, as we look back to last year?
The numbers, that's great.
No, no, cost, cost, sorry. No, no, cost, cost of services. In the, in the, in the last couple of years, I'm kind of curious.
Give me one second. Thank you.
It was a different camp, 2019, and now we can't pay any...
Yeah, it was the camp in Michigan.
Can't be reversed, just a little different experience. Yeah, this is like, it's not Apple Day.
Like night and day?
Yeah, it's night, night and day. Timberly is much more advanced. I thought the quality of the counselors was, you know, at a higher level, the facility was nicer. I think the experiences were at a level, it did align with our curriculum, you know, and the standards. You know, I just, there was more opportunity for collaboration and engagement. With two schools going at once, so there were a lot of, I think, advantages of Timberly, but I think you paid for those.
No comparison?
No comparison, that's it.
Okay, that's breaking the law, offering the forty.
Any positive comments for parents or students unsolicited?
Just, you don't have to be sure. Did you say that there was more bang for your buck this year as opposed to?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Even if, so, I think I could have even told you around the numbers, but it's like 77 this year. I think the prior place was like 45 years.
It was close.
It was almost twice the cost, so it's more than twice this year.
Yeah, I mean, if you're asking me, I'm going to tell you, yes. I know you guys like colleagues, but, yeah, I mean, just their facility and just, you know, the activities that were offered were at such a high level of student engagement, and they were like night and day. I think I could have went to camp if you were here, honestly, provided some of those team building and some of those experiences. But I think that they really had, you know, those kids were busy from the time they got up, and when they really retired, at the end of the day, they were exhausted. I think the meals, the food in itself, and the bedding, and the quality of the dorms was just... Yeah, would you guys agree?
Is the travel still on, is it cost myself, is this still?
Yeah, for all the equipment. You know, it comes down to an investment in our students. And as we've talked, we want to, you know, we do have Irons Oaks in our backyard, so there's an opportunity there, but it's not Camp Timberly. But there are other grade levels that we could take advantage. We took our administrative team out there this year, had an incredible time, I think. It's a great resource, it's great administrative thing to access as well. John, do you have a question?
Nope.
When do we need to sign that contract?
Oh, the sooner the better. We're on, hey, we're on schedule, actually, we're ahead of schedule compared to last year, but I would say last year is a little bit...
So, that's next month?
We'll bring them on the 10th if we're ready.
District 161 logo.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so... Sure. Okay. Yes, thank you, all right. No, because it was a different color. It was a, yeah, a very dark blue purple. All right, so, we lightened up that a little bit. This doesn't have to be a final color, but we wanted to see it. There's a couple of things to pay attention to. The feedback from the board last time, flip all the, flip the names of the schools over. Should I put this right side up? We did that. Put Parker Junior High on the bottom, we did that. If you, if you look at the bottom, oh, it isn't there. If you look at either of the logos, the two dots equidistant from the ones, right? So, before Flossmore Hills and after Heather Hill, those are even, right? Our graphic designer, this is how her mind works visually and just artistically. She said, typically, when you're making a logo, there should be some organization of that, that matter. What that does, though, is Parker Junior High is crooked on the bottom. So, as long as that's okay, the logo comes out like this. I don't know if you can truly tell that there's a major difference. The other, the other logo that we're going to carry forward was the Sydney Opera House butterfly, her professional opinion. She recommended to drop that, move forward with this one. We have the book, we have the horizon, we have the new day coming kind of perspective. We also moved the page down just a smidge, one of our, Cam, I know, was caught up on the lack of symmetry. So, we trimmed that up just a little bit, we can also trim it up just a little bit more so that more of the one stem was exposed.
Was that supposed to be, remind me, what we talked about when we were over? So, it's a book, but was that supposed to be like the sun at the bottom, or not?
Yes, oh, we also shrunk, we shrunk the amount of space at the bottom as well. If you remember the, the black space at the bottom was fairly large. We shrunk that down to make the 161 a little bit bigger, and we centered the Flossmore School District, and then made the 161 larger. So, yes, it's the book, but it's also kind of this horizon, horizon perspective, sunrise. I think we talked about it. Katie's recommendation was a solid color, because it's more of a stamp.
Could you talk about why Parker has to be designated as junior high? Why not just Parker, or Mardel Parker? And if we went that direction with that, alleviate the symmetry problem on the bottom?
Probably, or at least a little bit closer.
Or could cause different problems, I don't know.
I think that, well, we just, me, I just think we usually refer to those Flossmore Hills, Heather Hills, Serena Hills, Western Avenue, Parker Junior High, or PJH. That's just how, I think, in my experience, people kind of refer to the schools.
Oh, I think they refer to it.
Yeah, I do, too. Because really, it's Heather Hill Elementary School, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, you're right, we should add what's going on that.
So, Katie recommended a solid color, because it's more of a stamp. Kathy, if you can remind popping out of there. There are a couple of... The 161 merch? You know, so this is just a couple of, this is just what the logo would look like on a margin scale. Obviously, the color on those things can shift, but she drew this together. Kate solved it, and we just enjoyed the work.
Did Katie pick the lighter blue color, or did you pick it?
Here's a recommendation from a board member to lighten up the color.
Sure, but we didn't, didn't we?
Oh, yes.
How else did you pick it?
That is, I don't think that's real style.
But no lighter, and the board wants to do it, it's fine, but I have a submission that we might have lighter color.
Yeah, definitely was shaded blue. You know, I think it looks a little bit better when it was so dark, I couldn't... There are two, there are two colors on those two stamps on the, of the left. And it's almost impossible to tell. The one on the right is blue, the one on the left is black. So, you can see it if you know it's there, but it's so dark that it's hard to tell.
Might be nice, but you're never, that's never a problem, you're never going to be...
No.
I bet, so I just wanted to break down this. I've been to programs, I've been to conferences, and that's why it's bigger, and that's why it is what it is. And we just wish it would be to, if we wanted silver lighters, it's fine, it's a lot lighter picture, because the lighter blue looks like an hourglass.
Well, I think certainly we should have, be able to, valid, you know, Anton Prince, over there, we like on, you know, somebody printed that out at the printers, to visit it, we'll get them, I think, too. You know what I mean, like, because there's a big difference between the projected screen version versus the board and looking at mine, I was picking your stuff. Just so we're all on the same page, you know, this is...
Sure.
This is going to be it.
All right.
But just, can we ask her what we do?
Yeah, we'll see what we can do with the name on Parker. To John's point, see if that takes care of our symmetry issue there. We'll go back, give her some carte blanche on the color, see what she would recommend, any improvements.
Yeah, I just have a quick comment. In working with her on a few different designs, I think changing the name of Parker is going to cause more issues than it will solve. Because when you look at the way that it's aligned, it's not aligned by the name, it's aligned by the dots that are, so it's a straight line across school district, and then the two dots line up. So, if you're extending the name, shortening the name, those dots can shift in another odd way, and it's really a matter of like a millimeter, and it throws the whole thing off, and your eyes are like...
It's my solution of Mardel Parker. Hence, my suggestion of Mardel Parker, the full name.
Just Mardel Parker?
But is that true, even if you increase the font size, it's still, does that? I mean, because if you just have Parker, then every letter can be larger, right? It'd be a less letters? So, I... So, the dots could be the dots, but everything will be larger now, font will be bigger.
Definitely, it's the overall shape of...
I understand, but Parker is larger, and there's more space in between each letter. I'm just, I'm guessing that she can do it, and then we can see what it looks like, and mark out too.
Right. We're going to go back to choices, some tough, for approval. I think we can, I think we can get this solved, if I'm asking you. I think we can do it. So, we'll work on the name piece, we will work on the color. Were there any other pieces that we had to think of? If anything comes to you, if you're struck by an artistic bolt of lightning, let me know.
I have thought about the yellow ones with the sun.
We, so we talked about that as we were trying to build it up, it was leaking. Because of the solid chunks, like, what they're called?
Book pages.
Book pages? That makes perfect. The colors would leak, and it was hard to get the boundaries.
And so, you're also going to shade down the book page on the left?
The left book page, we can do that, yeah.
If it helps somewhere, I'll see what color, I'll go to the basket.
Oh, that's a good one.
And I think part of her point to keeping one color that stands, you can be more creative in merging letter options, is with two colors, you have to make sure everything is, you know, matches essentially.
Good.
Thank you.
We're getting close, looks good. We're getting there.
Any questions or comments regarding superboard topics? I see the look of excitement on Carolyn's face.
I just realized I have a lot of it, yeah, but I do love it.
No? Okay, Steve, you have?
Okay, well, then, I need a motion to adjourn, so... Okay, all of the eager say aye?
Aye.
All say aye. I'm meeting adjourned at exactly 9:30.